All right, well, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. I always enjoy being able to exchange ideas, thoughts, questions with everyone in our community because we live in a very, very special place. Nashua has a wonderful family atmosphere, a great place to raise a family, and I feel honored and privileged to have served as the mayor for the time that I have. We have been recognized for being a very strong community in a number of ways over the last couple of years. We were found in one survey to be the second safest city in the United States. Now, this is due to many factors. Police and fire do a great job, and the city government, the Board of Aldermen and I have done a lot over the last few years to strengthen those departments because our priority is to make the community even safer. We also, though, it's due in large part to the character of Nashuaans, the second safest city in the United States, because of the 182 cities that were surveyed, Nashua was second lowest in terms of the number of personal assaults committed by one person on another because this is a community of civility and respect where people act civilly towards each other, and that is something that I'm very proud of and which is very, very important. We also were recognized as the fourth-best-run city in the United States. Now, this is due, the principal measure is the cost of services versus the quality. And on a per capita basis, given the quality of services we have here in Nashua, we were ranked fourth-best out of, you know, close to 200 cities in the United States. But we are fortunate to be also to have a very strong team of people working to advance our city, to make it better. Fran Nutterupham is in the state legislature. She is, and Christine.
Crystal.
Crystal.
Lloyd.
Crystal, Crystal, your last name?
Lloyd.
Crystal Lloyd, she's new, I'm sorry. Crystal Lloyd is a new state rep in Ward 6, and they have done a really good job up in Concord fighting for Nashua. Paul Patty is the, on the rail commission, and Tim Cummings back here is head of, he's administrative services director, and so we appreciate everyone who is working to move the city ahead. Now, there are a lot of things that are going on in Nashua, and I want to discuss a few of those things, and then, you know, we'll, I'll be glad to answer your questions and comments and anything that you want to talk about. You've seen over the last few years, we've made a very significant effort to improve our infrastructure. We've paved 120-some miles of streets. There was a long, long period of where not nearly enough was invested in street maintenance and other infrastructure projects. We've done a lot with the sewers and the sewage treatment plant. You don't really see that, but very important to the way the city operates. We have recently done a large school project. You see the benefits, or we're in the midst of a large middle school project. You see that here. Fairgrounds was completed in the fall, not of '22, but of '21. The students fully occupied this new space. Rick Dowd, who is running the project, ran the project and is now working on the other schools with the Joint Special School Building Committee. And I toured, we toured this building just before it opened in August of 2021, and teachers, the staff, they couldn't believe the difference that we had brought about, that the city had brought about as a result of the work that's done here. It's solar-powered, 21st-century technology, and the whole idea is to just totally upgrade the middle schools across the board. Right now, Penechek is being worked on and will be completed over the, it's mostly done, but will be completed over the summer. And right now, if you go down to the south part of the city, off Buck Meadow Road or Cherrywood Drive, you see that there is a new middle school being constructed there to replace the Fairgrounds Middle School.
Elm Street.
The Elm Street Middle School. And one thing I wanted to mention to you is the fact of community power. This is something that we believe can cut your electric bills. Now, community power is an approach that's been used across the country to provide power to residents and commercial customers as well at a lower price than the traditional utility. What happens is communities, in our case, the city of Nashua and 16 other municipalities, counties across New Hampshire would band together to buy power on behalf of their residents. This is something that was authorized by the New Hampshire Legislature several years ago and which has, the details of which have been ironed out at the PUC and in the legislature up in Concord. So, the, and the Community Power Organization, it's called the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, here in the Nashua Community Power, has engaged experts that have worked in this field for a long time, and come April or early May, we expect that we will begin purchasing power on behalf of the residents. Now, and others that are EverSource customers, EverSource customers only. Now, you've seen the price of electricity skyrocket to 22 cents a kilowatt. There are other, there are ways to, if you're in the market at a different time, if you're bidding for power, for electricity at a different time than EverSource, there's a great opportunity to get it for less. For example, the city, right now, many of our contracts are, we're buying a lot of electricity under a contract that's now been in place for about two years and will go about two more for 5.9 cents a kilowatt. So as a result of that, you and all of our taxpayers and citizens are saving $1.6 million a year. Now, there's an, the Community Power Organization will not be able to buy power at 5.9, but even if we can save 2.5 cents a kilowatt, less than the average, less than the EverSource price of 22, that amounts to $100 a year on average for a residential customer. But you will retain freedom of choice, and the reason is, is that if for any, you automatically go in, you will still receive bills from EverSource. EverSource does not produce power, but they deliver it. So if you look at your bill, it is made up of a number of different charges. They will still be, EverSource will still be paid for all the distribution and the other factors that they're being paid for now, except for the price of power. I just looked at our bill, and, you know, the EverSource charge is mounted to, you know, 150 or so, and the, the, the delivery was 150 or so, but the electricity itself was something like $240 or $50. So you will not, you will still be billed by EverSource in the same way. But if anytime you want to leave Community Power, you can always do that and go back to EverSource. So this will give you an alternative that you do not have now. You can either, you will be switched to Community Power, you'll still be billed by EverSource, you won't notice anything, but if for some reason you want to switch back to EverSource, you can always do that. And I think you have to do it for the beginning of a month, but that is a good feature of the program. So we are optimistic that we can save you a lot of money, and we're trying to save money for Nashuaans in many different ways. One thing I wanted to mention before we go to questions and comments is the revaluation which we had recently. Now, this is a state-ordered, state-mandated, state-regulated, state-supervised revaluation. If we had had a choice, we would not have done this right now. And the reason is that the value of property, residential property, houses, went up so much, on average, more than 40%. At the same time, the commercial property in the city, the malls, the industrial property, offices, maybe went up, depends on the building, but didn't go up nearly the 40%. So what it, so state law says that we allocate taxes based upon the fair market value of all properties. So if, just as a hypothetical, if one property were 10% of the entire value of the city, they pay 10% of the taxes, and we'd have 29,000 property payers, so it gets allocated across that group. What happened is that before the revaluation, residences in total were paying about, represented about 65% of the entire value of the city, which was at that point around $10 billion, and commercial was 35%, roughly. After the revaluation, because the residences, the homes went up so much, the residential properties are now much, are closer to 70% of the total as opposed to the 65, and commercial as a percentage of total has dropped from approximately 35 down to something closer to 30. That has pushed everybody's property taxes up. Now, we know that this is work, this is, this is hard, the, I mean, the fundamental, the most expensive things that any community does here in New Hampshire, and really probably across the country, is schools. You know, more than 60% of the money, when you add it all up, goes to schools, salaries, buildings, capital costs, everything like that. Here in New Hampshire, we have the lowest rate of state support for public education of any of the 50 states, so we're 50th in New Hampshire, and that's the system. We have no income tax, we have no sales tax, but property taxes are very high. So we know that this revaluation causes hardship, and we're trying to offset it and save costs in any ways that we can. One thing we're trying to do for those who are on fixed income is increase what we call the elderly exemption. This, if you qualify, given income and asset levels, you can have a great proportion of the property tax forgiven. You do have to be at least 65. And right now, we have the biggest of the elderly exemptions in New Hampshire, but this will advance it once passed by the Alderman and put into place. This will, you know, make that even larger. That's an effort to help the people stay, people stay in their homes. So with that, why don't I, you know, conclude for the moment and take any questions or comments or anything that you would like to get into?
And if you could wait till I run over to you with the mic, you, you in the room will hear it, I'll make sure I show them through the video, so that's why I need to have the talking when you reach your microphone.
All right. Yes, Fran.
Well, I know technically Elm Street Middle School is not in Ward 6.
Yes.
It's in Ward 4, but, so what's up with that? I was sorry not to be able to come to a meeting in the middle of the day. Was it yesterday or today?
Yesterday.
Yeah, I've been to all the Zoom meetings, but I wondered, who makes the final decision about, we're going to sell this part or that part or whatever?
So over time, we have taken a lot of community input about this in various ways. A lot of it occurred during COVID, so there was a lot, there were Zoom meetings, there have been some in-person meetings, and, but no final decision is made yet. Now, the, sort of the substance of the conversation has been that people would like to see kind of medium-density residential with an affordable component to it. Now, medium density means, you know, two or three stories, not, you know, 10, and it means on that parcel, there might be 300 or 400 units. So that is the direction it seems to be headed. But another thing that has happened is that Riviera University is seeking to establish, they have these teams, but they're, but they need better facilities. They believe that their ability to attract students and to just move the university ahead would be greatly benefited by a full-fledged varsity men's and women's hockey programs. If they have this, they could play, if they had these and a home rink, they can play, you know, other teams, St. As and others like that around the region. And just the school spirit, this actually, the, the fans that would be developed locally would really help the university, and really, to the extent that Riviera strengthens, it strengthens Nashua. So they've been working with Conway, but Conway has only one sheet of ice, and the high schools, all the youth hockey, everyone is using that. So really, Riviera doesn't have the access to it that they fully need, and I don't even think they can play home games, they don't have two locker rooms, they don't have an away locker room, this kind of thing. So Sister Paula, who's done a fantastic job at Riviera, has helped, has attracted the interest of something called Edge Sports. Now, they are a profit-making, builder and operator of ice rinks, and they own maybe a dozen ice rinks around New England and elsewhere, own or are developing. They, it seems, would be willing to come in and build two sheets of ice and offer Riviera whatever time they need. There would, of course, it would be leased, but ice time would be leased, but Riviera would be the prime tenant. So it's possible that on about a quarter of the site, down where the portable classrooms are now at the corner of Chestnut and Lake, you would have two ice rinks. Now, those would be available to Riviera and to anyone else in the community who would want to use it. Again, like Conway, the ice time would have to be leased, but they would be there for the community's use. So that has been presented to the community, to the Board of Aldermen so far. The feedback seems favorable, but we're still taking input, and ultimately, you ask the question, who makes the decision? Ultimately, the Board of Aldermen decides and votes how to dispose of any city property, and this would follow that same rule.
Okay, thank you.
Yes?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. The middle school presentation yesterday was 1 to 3 o'clock, and I thought it was an odd time. And it was well-attended, I mean, for that time of day, probably 25-plus residents or so. The people doing the presentation said there were only going to be about 100 units, and they were about 1,000 square feet each, but I guess that include, that's a gross, the net would be maybe 750. But there was a lot of discussion from people around parking, everybody had issues of parking, but about the ice rink, the keef, all different scenarios, and I think it's really important to have more at different times outside of, like, the presentation that they did, the community, whatever it was called, yesterday afternoon was good because you could just speak and ask several questions and follow up with somebody else, and it was great. And there were residents there and business owners. I'd like to see more of those because it seems like sometimes when things are presented at first, and it might be just a pipe dream, that people don't go because they think it's a pipe dream and it's never going to happen, and the closer things get to happening, the more people want to talk about it. And unfortunately, the less information is presented because we don't have a local newspaper anymore, and that is a real disservice to our community because there's so little ways to get information disseminated, where The Telegraph used to do a lot of reporting and standing up for the average common man in Nashua, and now that is gone by the wayside, unfortunately. I have a few things that I'd like to.
All right, but can we talk about this Elm Street thing for a minute?
The what?
So yes, I think we want to put in more, we want to take more public input.
Yes.
I don't know where this 100 units comes from.
That's what the gentleman said.
Well, Tim is here, but we, there's far more space than that. Now, one basic decision that has to be made is do, is the middle school raised and new, completely new units built, or is the middle school rehabbed? At least with the Board of Aldermen, there are a couple of problems with rehabbing the building. You don't get as many units, number one. Number two, there still are some structural problems with the building, and with, if you were to replace the building, I mean, you could get, with parking on site, 300 to 400 units, and that's been presented to the Board of Aldermen. You can see those plans online. So I agree, yes, we should take more community input. I mean, we, we kind of see what direction it's going, but, you know, it's an important decision, and, you know, hearing from more people is certainly a good thing.
I'm glad that we're having this dialogue because I find that there's no meetings presented by the City Hall that allows for dialogue of questions asked and maybe someone taking notes so that you get back to people with concerns. I feel like the three minutes at the Board of Aldermen meeting is not enough, it should be at least increased to five minutes. With no Zoom allowed anymore at the Board of Aldermen meetings and the people who attend, increasing to five minutes would not be too detrimental because there's three, four, five people maybe that attend, and if there is something really pressing where there's a lot more people, good, you have a lot more opinions. But I would like to request that the speaking time be increased to five minutes at the Board of Aldermen for all residents. So, so yes, the dialogue is a big thing because when you go to those meetings and you say, here's some information, or here's a question, I've been told directly, this isn't the avenue, there's no dialogue, you're not going to get an answer, and so it's very frustrating. When you have people who decide to take their time and get involved in city government because they love this city and they want to be involved and they want to see it move forward in a positive way and have things to contribute, that you get kind of treated like that, that there's not.
Well, that's why I'm here.
Yeah.
And this is the fourth meeting we've had like this. We do them, we've done one, Wards 1, 4, 5, and now 6.
Right.
We have the other wards scheduled, and prior to COVID, I was holding a coffee every month. Now, that kind of got interrupted by COVID, and we will resume with that. And we've held a few as COVID has ebbed and flowed over that period of time, but we'll resume with that, I think, as soon as we get through with the meetings, but, with it, with our ward meetings. But your input is very valuable. But I would like to, if other people have questions, I would be glad to come back to you, but I think we should allow other people, if there's anyone else, here's somebody.
I have two others, when?
All right, two others, but.
Yeah, my question's about the, what is it called, community choice? What you named the utility?
Well, we call it Nashua, Nashua Community Power, yes.
Nashua Community Power. Who's going to minister it? I mean, who's going to be buying the electricity for you?
So there is a firm that does this for other, other, other communities around the country called Ascend.
Okay.
And they, they, their approach is different than EverSource. So what EverSource does, at least right now, is they go out once every six months with one massive contract. Now, Ascend uses a different approach, which is, they, they use some artificial intelligence, and they enter a variety of smaller contracts in which they, you know, from, they purchase some here and some there, and through diversification and not going into the market with a huge request or huge purchase.
Portfolio.
Yeah, a port, yes, very good, a portfolio, yeah. A portfolio of energy suppliers, and in that way typically lower the price.
What do they get per kilowatt to administer a contract? Do you know?
Well, they certainly get paid, the, I need to ask exactly what the number is. I just have the idea that it's, well, it's certainly less than a penny, but I'm not sure how much less.
Yeah, and what's, and on top of that, what does the city want for branding it? You know?
Well, the, the, we are, the, the legislation that authorized this sets forth, you know, what, what these communities can do. And the communities can, they can, charge up to 1/10 of a cent per kilowatt, but that money has to be reserved for a, you know, energy projects. So if we wanted to establish a solar farm, if we had that opportunity, if we had set aside this reserve fund, we would be, we would be able to use that money to do that energy project. But the, but no, none of this revenue can go like to the general fund, this has to be a completely separate operation.
Yeah. Something attracted you guys to this, what have other cities done with it so far to make it attractive? I mean.
Save people money.
Yeah, I mean, but as far as the solar farm, has anybody done that?
Well, in New Hampshire, I, yes, elsewhere. This, well, this has not happened in New Hampshire before.
Okay.
This is, this was just authorized two, three years ago. There's a lot of back and forth at the PUC regarding the details, there have to be, you know, the regulations as to how the utility works with community power and all kinds of details. So this would be the first New Hampshire venture, but elsewhere, yes. But you see community power in a number of Massachusetts communities and in other states around the country.
So it's not, it's not like a co-op kind of thing, it's kind of like we're getting licensed through a, or a for-profit company, but they're using their leverage or they're buying power, and then our carrot is, is we can build something maybe with it if it works.
Now, another thing that we can offer, or that we will offer, is the option for any resident to select a power mix which is different and greener than the basic. So right now, I think EverSource is offering around 20% green power. There would be options available. Now, you'd have to pay more, but if you said, I want 50% green power, you would have that option, you would have a higher price, but that's what your energy portfolio would be. You could say 100%. Now, at some point, EverSource offered this as well, but they said their participation was so low that they stopped. But I know my wife and I, we bought 100% green for a couple of years, and then they stopped the program. And it costs some more, but not all that much more. I don't remember the exact numbers.
Okay, I'm good.
Thank you.
Yes, Chris, Crystal.
Hi, thanks. So I guess, what are the updates on the asphalt plant going in? That's kind of the big one.
So just for background, what we have is at, on Temple Street, at the site of Newport Construction, which is up near the end of Temple, up near Henry Hanger, the owner has proposed, as you've asked, an asphalt plant. Now, we believe that this is not good for the neighborhood. We're, we're working to transform that eastern part, eastern part of the downtown into a residential neighborhood, and I've already permitted one project that, you know, they're holding on to and haven't built, but there are others that could come forward. So there is, so, and there's two layers of zoning there. There's the underlying industrial zone. In that, if that's all there was, you know, within an industrial zone, an asphalt plant is a permitted use. But because we are, because there's potentially a rail station there and because we're seeking to encourage residential development, there's a so-called overlay district, which imposes additional conditions, and you need to satisfy, you, an applicant, needs to satisfy a number of conditions, and we don't think an asphalt plant can do that. For one example, the one thing that the applicant needs to show is that it will not negatively impact the property values of neighboring owners. And Mr. Cummings here has been working with an appraiser who the city has engaged, who believes that, and is going to offer the opinion that this will impact. believes that, and is going to offer the opinion that this will impact the value of surrounding properties and, you know, bring those values down. But we also have environmental concerns, you know, the odors. We just, and, and the truck traffic, it's, it, the projection is 120 to 150 trucks a day. These are heavy trucks and though, that could spread a lot of odors and other things. So for various reasons, we're concerned, but the applicant is pressing forward. And the hearing on that, at least the next hearing on the asphalt plant, both sides are marshaling a lot of evidence, so it keeps getting delayed. But they just submitted 500 pages of stuff in the, I think, yesterday. But the next hearing, at least potentially, is March 14th before, excuse me, March 16th before the planning board. So that's a Thursday night.
Will that have public comment?
Once the hearing is opened, yes, there will be, you know, anybody can speak at a planning board meeting. Now, we were thinking the other day that probably this isn't going to get resolved that night. But, but, but there, it's, we, we're thinking, you know, it'd be, we should open this to the public, even though it's not, there's not likely to be a decision, we need to begin to take this input. So it's likely that there would be public, you know, public input. So, you know, the planning board follows a fairly strict set of rules under state law, but, you know, they have to quote, "open the hearing." And once they open, and the hearing hasn't even opened yet, really. So once they open the hearing, then anybody can comment, including the applicant or anybody else who wants to, you know, yes.
A couple times in recent years, I've asked about.
Oh.
A couple times in the past few years, I've asked questions concerning sidewalks along Robinson Road and from Bishop Gorden out to East Hollis, East Dunstable Street.
Yes.
And again, there's expense and everything involved in that. And the previous alderperson got an estimate from the city to do Robinson Road, the entire length would be close to $1 million.
Right.
With the infrastructure bill passed at the end of this, or during the past year, are there funds available the city could get to finance more sidewalks in the city?
Possibly. Now, that's a good thing which we should follow up on. I mean, the, I mean, we're putting a lot of money into infrastructure, but because the streets have gotten so far behind, that's where the money is going. I mean, it's, we're spending around $7.5 million a year paving streets. So we need more sidewalks. There are a lot of sidewalks that need to be fixed. And the sidewalk, you know, some sidewalks are okay, but there's a lot that aren't. The Robinson Road one is an expensive project because, you know, it's lengthy, plus the topography is not good. You probably have to take property from people, you know, it wouldn't be easy. But I think, but I'd love to follow up on the issue of whether we could apply. Now, we have applied for various things. We did get, through the help of Senator Shaheen and Congresswoman Custer, we got a grant of $3 million to build a park between the library and the Court Street Building, the city Court Street Building where the Street or Theater is. There's, we've, we've had a design for a while, but have never been able to come up with the city money for that. We got six, was it Tim, 300 or 600 for the ramp? 300, half the cost of building a handicap accessible ramp at the north end of the Cotton Transfer Bridge going over the river. There's a ramp on the south. But we have not gotten any money for sidewalks, but I'd be glad to talk about to people whether that's at least an eligible possibility. Okay? Do you live on Lund Road or Robinson Road or?
I live on Delta right off and Robinson Road. And I walk along those.
Right.
And particularly on Lund, where it crosses over the stream there.
Yeah.
It's pretty treacherous. And people of all ages, from young schoolchildren, people walking their dogs, elderly, everybody.
Yeah. Well, you know, you can see that, I mean, I'm guessing that the Lund would be easier because the topography is, but I mean, there's no slopes and stuff like that. Because then, you know, on Robinson, there are slopes coming along. That playground on Robinson, you know, would be an obstacle on the north side. We did move the wall, I think, a little bit to improve the park.
Yeah.
To improve the parking, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I raised the issue with a different suggestion, but, but that's an improvement.
Yes. But we'll look into this and thank you for raising it. Karen? We'll come back to you now.
I, I wholeheartedly understand what you're saying about walking because I walk that way also. And the speeds on Robinson Road is something I've been working with the Nashville Police Department over two years about. And with Alderman Elizabeth Lu, got a crosswalk with flashing lights and flashing speed thing in there, reduced the speed from 30 to 25. And there has been a difference because there's been two different traffic studies. But, but it depends when. And Lund Road with BG getting out of school, it's really, it's a real, it's a death trap if you're trying to walk there. I've, I've, I've resolved to walking in different areas because of that. And I, you know, I've said to the PD, you go out to do things for your health, to reduce stress, and then you see these cars coming at you at 50 miles an hour and they're like this. So it's really, it does everything but alleviate the stress. So.
And it is, if, it is a danger. I mean, you got to be careful. If you know anyone who's been hit by a car, it can be really bad. So be careful.
Thank you for bringing up the asphalt because that was one of mine. So thank you very much. I appreciate it and it was good information. And everybody's been saying, hey, when's the, when's the hearing? When's the hearing?
March 16th.
So thank you because now I can just tell people and, you know, feel like in the know.
But now the delay, I mean, to some degree helps because it enables the city to gather more evidence, information. An environmental law firm seems to have become involved and on, on behalf of the owner of the Riverfront Landing and not an adjacent, but a nearby property owner. And so, you know, we'll see what happens.
I've got a sign or two in my yard.
Oh, good.
So, but yeah, the speed in our, in our ward coming off the highway, exit four, there's a lot of accidents in the intersection of Robinson Road where you have Robinson, East Dunstable, Lund, the highway. I know it's on the hot sheet at the PD, but it's, it's really, it decreases our quality of life in, in Ward Six.
Yes.
The speeds. The other thing I wanted to ask about, the elderly exemption, I realize that it's increased the amount that people will be able to, or the exemption has increased. However, the asset, there's two parts to this. And I think it's two RSAs. One is the exemption off of your property tax. The other is the assets that you're able to have. So you can have currently $150,000 in assets.
Correct.
Which is, does not include your home, does not include your car. So you live in that home and drive a car for a person. And you can have income, two people, up to $50,000. Actually, that's even one, but it's not noted that way in the pamphlet, which is.
It's either one or both.
Yeah, one or both, but it just says income up to $50,000. So it's a little confusing when you're reading it, but one person can earn the 50 or two people can earn the 50. However, if you have, okay, you got the home, you got the car, you know, on the side and if you're working a part-time job or not. But if you have a person who, let's say there's been a trash collector working for the city of Nashville for 30 years with a family, putting away some money in a 401K and they've got a nice little nest egg, let's say $300,000. They, when they hit that 65, they're not eligible because they've got money in a 401K. They've been doing everything they're supposed to do their entire life, saving money, living in the city, and now they can't utilize it because they have a little bit of a nest egg, which most likely is just going to keep them in their home if they're disabled or injured or sick. And that part of the RSA has not been touched or addressed and needs to be so that it's not just $150,000, maybe it's 185 or 200. Because then the, I think, I don't have my numbers with me. There might have been, I think Alderman Klee said 176 or 180, some people who were taking that exemption now or who paid no taxes. That amount would be spread out to a much broader.
Yes.
Number, like three times the number of residents in Nashville over 65 could take advantage of some tax break. It wouldn't be no tax bill like some people have now. It would be maybe a third less or 25% less. But wouldn't it be wonderful to hit 800 to 1,000 people instead of 187?
Yeah.
So I'd really like to see.
Now, more than 187 get it now, but I think what you're saying is there are 187 who pay no taxes whatsoever. You know, I believe the number is, you know, 400 or five, you know, somewhere in that range, 450, 500, something. But, you know, you're right that as people's incomes rise, the exemption should.
Correct. And that hasn't moved.
Right.
So that needs to be addressed.
All right.
Thank you.
Now, we've got a little more time. I usually try to finish by seven because often we have other meetings and we really want you to come back. If we go on too long, we found like people don't really, really want to come back. Sandra?
I don't want to just flash or comment. I, it could be for the Board of Education too, but I, prevention is a huge word for me. And I work with individuals with developmental disability and mental health and all of that. And, and sports is a big thing for me and for my, has been for my life, for my children. My children are lucky to have a mom like me that encourages, that pursues and, and... But my son, they had a, they had a, for example, they had a tryout here at the school, more than 100 kids.
Tryout for, for what?
Basketball.
Okay.
One example, one sport.
For the middle school team?
A few got selected. So that means 100 boys that could be practicing. I don't care if they're going to the NBA or if they're going to play for college, if they're going to play in high school. They were rejected, like no space for you. So then they're home, they're playing video games, they're doing nothing.
What about youth basketball? I mean, the city runs leagues.
The leagues are another problem because.
Could they go to that?
We don't have enough coaches.
Oh, really?
And it's twice a week, like my son plays like Friday and Saturday. And there's like 25 kids in one team, so they don't get the, you know, the plate that they could get. So I'm just thinking, how can we do, encourage more? And I know we have the YMCA, we have the Boys and Girls, we have the PEL, but those are little, little bit here, little bit there. What can we do?
We'll have to think about that. You know, when I was that, when I was that age, I mean, I'd say, your son's probably fairly tall, I would say, don't give up. When I was that age, I don't think I made the, the, the school team. And I played in a church team for a while. But then, you know, as I got a little older, I then, you know, got on the high school team, I played on the varsity and, you know. So I would say, he shouldn't give up, just keep trying. But that's an interesting observation that we should maybe have more opportunities for kids. That's, you know, important. And so let us think about that a little bit, how to do that. The youth leagues are, you know, a good opportunity, but if there aren't enough teams, there aren't enough coaches, of course, that's a problem.
I, I'm not concerned so much about my kids because Miles wasn't picked sixth grade and seventh grade, and then he was picked for eighth grade. And then now in high school, he has an amazing opportunity, which it wasn't even in, I didn't even ever dream about it. So you know my kids personally, but I'm concerned about the other kids, you know, those other, if my kid was the number 199 other kids are not included, like the sport after school.
Right.
And the other thing is the prevention started early in school, like we should have the health class in kindergarten. You know, the, the, the specific word, the level, the, you know, but teach the prevention, teach you how bad drugs and, and now they, they invent other things and alcohol and what does to a family, what does to a brain. It's just prevention start, you know. I, I thought about middle school, but I think we should go like third, fourth grade, kindergarten even if it's possible. So maybe we should, I should just get more connected with the Board of Education and just see where we can.
Now, we have the Prevention Coalition.
I am part of the Prevention Coalition.
Which they do a good job, but, you know, they don't.
They do.
They can't, I guess, reach everybody, but.
It's small.
You know, they've been working very hard for quite a few years. If you're involved, you know that.
Many years, yes. And I just keep pushing for lower and lower grades and, because when you get to high school, you know, it's too late.
Jan Veluc has been running that for a long time.
Yes. And she was a teacher.
Very dedicated. All right. Yes, sir.
I've been a poll worker here for the last three years.
You've been a poll worker, so thank you.
You're welcome.
We need that.
My question is, who funds the elections? Is that the state level, the city level?
City pays for it. The city pays the election workers and the, and the cost of running the election.
Okay, so the state can, can set the rules, but, but each individual community.
Correct.
Makes the decision of how much people, you know, get paid and what gets spent as far as equipment and so forth?
Well, the equipment again is, the, the city decides, you know, how much to pay people and, and, you know, is in charge, as you've seen, of hiring and training and all this. Now, the state works with our, our city clerk to make sure the rules get followed. But in terms of the equipment, meaning the, the machines, the, you know, the voting machines, that is totally controlled. I mean, it's paid for locally, but you can only buy state authorized machines and there's only one machine that is state operated. Now, authorized, now, there's been some frustration in the last few years because these machines are outdated and there are better machines on the market. And we've had some trouble with the, some breakdowns, you know, these are older. But the State Secretary of State hasn't authorized any new machines. And the city clerk, clerks, there's an organization across the state, you know, city clerks or town city clerks organization, has been trying to encourage them to make, you know, a new authorization of a machine that they think is, is better than what we're using. But right now, we, you know, this is the only thing we can, the only alternative there is. Have you had trouble in Ward Six with any of the machines breaking or there was a problem of put the ballot in and it wouldn't?
Get jammed?
Yeah, yeah, it got jammed, right, right. The ballots were getting jammed or stuff like that. Have you had any problem like that when Ward Six?
I haven't noticed anything serious along.
Couple places.
But there's a lot of things with booths and supplies and there's a whole lot of areas where potentially things could be improved. And is there any talk about increasing the stipend for poll workers?
Well, we could think about that, yes.
Since I hear.
What do you make? What do you make? What do you make? What's your, you know, you are, which, what position do you hold? Are you a selectman?
No, it's, it's, it's the base one. And if you, if you work the whole day.
Yeah.
Which just, no, it's like, like, like the polls are open 14.
Yeah.
And you have to be there an hour early and it's anywhere from two to seven hours afterwards, depending on the election. It doesn't matter how many hours.
What do you get for that?
$175.
Well, you're essentially a volunteer. I mean, you know, really.
Right, right.
That's what we.
Like the state reps.
Yes, right. They get $100 for six months.
A year.
Yeah, yeah, the whole year. They're up there every day for at least six months. So they get $100, but, all right, good idea. But mostly, thank you for, you know, doing it because. because everybody who does that is very dedicated. It's not, not easy, especially in the presidential years, as you've already experienced, heavy turnout. So, a lot of tension, pressure, people are complaining, whatever. Yes, Fran?
So, on the side of mental health, is Nashville committed to make nice green spaces, walkways, paths, bike paths? Our youngest daughter, Cassandra, who's like 34 now, interned at City Hall and came home with these wonderful plans for Fields Grove and a little bridge. It wasn't quite on Fulton Street, but maybe the next one over, you know. It hasn't happened.
Over Fields Grove?
Yeah, a, a little bridge to make a walkway around Fields Grove because there's all the swamp land and whatever. So, but that kind of commitment to making our city pretty and walkable and to encourage people to exercise in safe places away from cars. Is there a committee that works on that or, you know, what more can we do?
We are committed to it. It is important. And, you know, over time, I think we've done a lot. There's, there's things that are in the works. For example, you know, we have 400 or 500 acres of conservation land in the southwest. We have Mine Falls Park. We have Fields Grove, which is kind of an inner-city jewel. And you live close to that. Now, we have a grant, for example, to extend the rail trail from City Hall to the east to Henry Hanger. That is in design. There's a little bit of, some obstacles have come up, which, you know, we could get into. It has to do with, there needs to be a little bit of land taking and things like that.
Like the asphalt plant. You can walk right to the asphalt.
It goes right to the asphalt, goes right by it. I mean, this is like what we're complaining about. You know, it's like adjacent to the, now, there's a rail, there's a fence there. But yes, it goes right to the asphalt plant. So, and right by it. We have another grant to, you know, we get this grant like three, four years ago, supposedly. We haven't gotten the money yet. So, to improve the walkability of French Hill. So, this would expand the sidewalks on Locke Street, which it's a, it's a walk in school, Mount Pleasant. Expand the sidewalks on Locke Street and would have to make Locke Street one-way because you need to narrow the street. And then it would be paired with Whitney. So, Whitney would go one way and Locke Street the other. But this would greatly improve the walkability and sort of bikeability of that neighborhood. You know, we would, this, there's a big cost to this, but we would love, I mean, I believe, you know, the master plan recommends that we narrow Main Street and add bike lane to it and more, and wider sidewalks. I don't, but that's a, you know, very costly project. So, I don't know, you know, whatever will happen with that. The Riverwalk, the Riverfront has a lot of expanded walkways. Once we get that going, that is also in design. And Tim can tell you that, you know, the engineers and all these people have, it's kind of over the, you know, well, it's going to take six more months. Okay, six months passed, it's going to take another six months. So, this happens over and over and over. Now, supposedly, they're going to be finished this year now, this spring?
Starting construction this spring.
Yes.
And where will it be?
But, but, but I, don't, don't take that to the bank. You know.
Don't believe it.
You know, when you see it, because we've been hearing this for a few years. But they have us over the barrel. I mean, what do we, if we fire these people and get someone else, it'll take, delay things for a year and, and...
Where would this Riverwalk be?
Well, it would, it'll be along the Nashville River. It will just expand and improve what you see there. There will be docks and things like that.
The one behind the library?
Behind the library, on the other side going up to BAE, but also to the west going down, on the north side, to the Cotton Transfer Bridge. The Renaissance Park on the south would be expanded and the view over the river would be vastly improved. The, and really the, you know, the parking would become a park and the Water Street ramp would probably become one-way and there would be parking added along it. Water Street used to be one-way, do you remember that?
It used to be one-way.
Water Street used to be one-way. It worked that way, right?
Right, for a long time, forever.
Right. And you know who changed that? You know who, you know who sponsored, you know who pushed changing it? Now it's in your ward, or this ward, Victor D'Varney. Remember him? He was a fire, fire chief and was a Ward Six Alderman, head of what was then the Traffic Committee. And he was a good guy and he, you know, he said we should make it two ways, which we did. But really, it could function one-way. And parking could be along there and enabling us to expand the park. So, those are, but there's, there's plans online. So, if you'd really like to look at the details, you can find that.
Plus, disc golf is coming.
Disc golf is coming.
Love it.
Yes, and...
I have one last one.
I, well, just let's, can we stick with Dick's? I want to thank you for agreeing to serve on that committee, to advise Public Works. You know, your efforts have been valuable. Yes?
We provide bus for the kids. Is it one mile away or two from the school? I'm not...
I think it's a mile or three quarters. I forget the exact, but it's not, it's not two miles, no.
Not two.
It's a mile, okay.
Could be like less than a mile because I'm heavily involved in the project with the legislature.
That's up to the school board.
Okay.
And we spend, I don't know, $7 million on, on bus transportation. That's going up. You know, the bid, they put, I think it's out for bid now for another year and they expect the bid, you know, the, the amount to be greatly increased. They only get sometimes one bid, maybe two. So, the cost of bus transportation is going up a lot. So, of course, shortening the distance would mean more buses and, you know, all that.
Okay. Because we try, we tried to get a van, we tried to get churches involved, but then nobody wants to drive to take the responsibility because you're driving kids to school every day, you know.
Yeah.
To school and in home. So, it is a big problem. It could be a little bit less.
Yes. Well, that's up to the school board. Now, it is 7 o'clock. We would like, I, you know, I think we should finalize things. But if you have one more question, if somebody wants to raise anything else. If not, thank you for coming and I really appreciate your input and we'll be back next year.